Okay, at this time, if everyone will please stand. Commissioner Gelfen will want to leave us in the case.
Dear God, we truly thank you for the privilege to be able to gather here this morning and for the personnel around the world that keep us safe so that we can do this. And dear God, we ask that every word, every thought that's spoken here today is spoken in a manner that you would approve of, and that everything is done, and that is done will be done under your favor. I ask that you be with each and every one here today and help us all to share our blessings with someone else who believes. Amen.
Southwest.
Let the nations live life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to call to a word to the regular meeting of the Division of the Commissioner for the Office of 27 Penny. Our first order of business is the approval of amendments for July 5th, 2017. Are they...do I obtain a motion?
A little move, Madam Chairman. Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, being discussed. Here or not, all those who favor approval of the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, amendments approved, five oh. Second item of the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I do have a couple of additions and some subtractions. Under "O" business, give you our ad number seven, a spray feel update. A spray feel update. Under "Close Session," eliminate economic development and real estate. Also, we have some... At this...also, because our nice delegations, they're trying to accommodate their schedules, and we have wanted to ask that a nice delegation, Kathy Davidson and April McCuffey, be placed as A, and un-niced delegations be B. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the meant agenda as amended?
Approve. Right.
Okay, a motion has been made in second. All those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay.
If I may, the approval of the equalization review minutes. Oh, I'll say included in the agenda.
Okay, I apologize, Mrs. Lane. I was...wasn't able to sign on my part. Going back up there to the Board of Equalization and Review Minutes for May 1st, 2017, have been presented to us. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Equalization and Review Minutes for May 1st and June 7th. Be approved.
Okay.
Right.
We have a motion to be made in second to approve the amendments for May 1st and June 7th of 2017. All those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, that is...they are approved, five oh. I will enter...okay, now we have Kathy Davidson. She is the Executive Director of the Alamooral Commission, and she has exciting news from to talk about.
Good morning, and it's always great to be in Dayton County and to be with you. It is an exciting time at the Alamooral Commission, and as you're aware, we've made strides in consolidating our services, being transparent with our services, as well as being fiscally responsible with the funds provided to us from the county as well as for our funding providers. And I'm here to discuss with you the expansion of our programs, as well as the Alamooral Commission taking on the construction of a new facility, and the process that we went through to come to my being here with you today. So the reason I'm here with you today is the Commission, while we're seen as a local government agency as enabled through the North Carolina General Assembly, we do not have tax and authority for bonds to take on debt service. And the local government commission requires the Commission to come to all of our county members, which you are aware that we have 10 of those counties within our region, to request that the counties, while you're members and were able to own real property, the counties have to agree to support our going into a contract and debt service for a building. And in talking with the local government commission, while we do not need 100% approval, they would like 100%, we do need 80%. So eight out of our 10 counties would have to enter into the interlocal agreement. And the facilities would be for our area agency on aging and senior nutrition program, our workforce development program, as well as our role planning organization, the economic development district, as well as our administration. And I just want to touch on some highlights of each program, so just to refresh your memory on the services that we provide and why it's so important that we're able to consolidate our services and continue to do what we do in a facility that is a collaboration between all of our programs. As you're aware, particularly with our area agency on aging and senior nutrition program, we provide essential services to older Americans under the Older Americans Act, and those are adults 60 years or older that allow them to live independently. And our AAA plans develops and coordinates delivery of supportive services, nutrition. We also serve as elder rights advocate and ombudsman, and we provide caregiver health and wellness support programs. And then moving forward, we look at our workforce development program, and we provide employment services as well as training to those that are underemployed, that are unemployed, and those that are looking to make a career change, both youth and adults. We also move forward to improve our regional employers' capacity to find and hire well-trained employees, and that starts with our youth in partnership with our schools. And we build on...we work for us development, we build on the partnerships that we have in our communities, public and private, and then enabling for stronger workforce in order to attract workers and as well as employment opportunities to our region. And then our role planning organization, we develop a long-range transportation plans for the region, working with each county and town to do this, and that's mandated by the Department of Transportation. And then we provide transportation-related data to our local governments, including multimodal for the roads, bikes, and trails, as well as freight and railroad. And we develop and prioritize projects for the strategic transportation improvement program that ranks those projects for state funding. And then even further is when we look at our economic development district. The Alamooral Commission has been the economic development district since 19...the fall of 1972, and we serve as the district for the entire region, for 6,200 counties, 10 counties. And we work with our local governments to obtain grants for infrastructure projects and to improve the opportunities within the region. And we also administer the comprehensive regional economic development strategy, and many of you have responded to the surveys, and a part of that was the broadband survey that we've been undertaking. We also administer the regional revolving fund that's been successful within our region. And then, of course, administration does what administration does. We administer the projects and act as the fiscal agent for all of our programs. We also act as the state clearinghouse for the region for projects that need state review as well as county review. And we monitor agendas and minutes for our local governments and ask planning staff for informational input before we respond to any clearinghouse employee from the state. We also provide research and guidance to local governments within the region, including HR guidance and economic development, as well as salary and taxing information. And then, of course, we are the...we provide advocacy for the region, and over the last two years, we've created a regional legislative agenda. So all of that is currently in space that we've outgrown, all of those programs, and we've had multiple locations, and we're looking at consolidating our services and looking at further collaborating within our programs. So looking at the story for the meeting, obviously, we do a lot under one roof, but we've outgrown our current state of operation with...our programs are in multiple location and consolidation eliminates duplicate expenses from telephone and IT to copy machines, supply purchases under one umbrella, shared expense. And workforce development staff, including some of our program managers, are sitting in the common area within workforce development and cubicles, and they're not able to provide the consultation and the confidential consultation that they're required to do in order to review and enroll youth and adults into the program. And as you're aware, we have many meetings from our RPO to our regular regional aging commission or committee that every county participates in, and most of those meetings are held offsite because we do not have enough space in our current facility. And today, we spend approximately $13,000 on rental, staff coordination time, travel and setup for those meetings not to be held in-house. And our current facility has multiple environmental issues, including non-toxic mold and allergens. While there has been some work within the facility, those environmental issues have not been addressed. So the facts for the analysis of our current space and looking at not only our current space, but leasing and new construction, as well as the assessment of what our true space needs are, you'll notice in the packet that we provided that our employee capacity based on current space, that our current space is 10,984 square feet. If we had the availability, not with our means now to have additional employees to provide the services that we do, we would need 4,140 square feet. That also includes additional meeting space as well as space for storage of files and supplies, as well as additional employees. Looking at the long-term strategic plans for our programs and the commission in general, on top of that, we would need an additional 1,480 square feet for offices and storage, with a total of 16,604 square feet. We rounded that up to 17,000 square feet, with 11 aging employees, 11 workforce development, two RPO employees, economic development and administration employees aboard, with a total of 26 utilizing of the facility. And then when we looked further in, of course, when you look at a project, you also do a comprehensive fiscal analysis, and we looked at staying in our current facility, leasing a different facility, building a new facility with financing for 40 years, and building a new facility with financing up to 40 years. And I want to let you know, one of the things that in working with the local government commission and USDA, as the commission is eligible for USDA financing, is that they recommended that our agreement with the county show a 40-year note, however, to look at strategically, look at a 30-year note, which is a standard mortgage, but having flexibility for modification of that note up to 40 years. And if showing in the agreement with the counties the 40 years, we would not have to come back to the counties to modify that original loan agreement should our counties approve our process and entering into the debt service. So you'll see the fiscal analysis for our current space. We're leasing a facility, a current facility, of 10,384 square feet, and just breaking it down, our current annual payment is $58,625, which works out to $5.34 a square foot. And then when we look at leasing space in Hartford, there's no space available, additional space available to lease for 17,000 square feet, so we looked outside of the area, and the going square...the going rate for square footage in Elizabeth City is $10.50. This is...yes, sir?
Before we get too far away from that first square there, $38,000, that's an annual lease?
That is an annual lease.
I'm sorry, Kathy.
No, you're fine, you're fine. I should have prefaced, if you have questions, please don't hesitate to ask. So in looking at the leasing square footage, of course, you have a one-time renovation and moving expense or interior buildup, and this is just an estimate looking at the available rental space in Elizabeth City of $300,000, a one-time design expense of $100,000, annual utilities of $20,000, and that was per square footage based on utility providers utilizing a school as an example, and there are actual utility bills. So the first year's annual expense would be $598,000, with a square footage of $35.18 per square foot. And for year two until the end of the lease, it would be $198,000 at $11.65. So even moving forward, looking at how we would finance a new building, the Alamooral Commission proposes utilizing $800,000 from our scripted $2.1 million fund balance. And this is after consultation with the local government commission and our auditor. And why $800,000? Some people are like, well, that's a very specific number to use. The programs, if you recall, the programs that I discussed, most of those programs are funded on a reimbursement basis. So in order to protect our cash flow and have the capability to meet three and six months reimbursement expenses, that $800,000 was what was recommended in order to keep that cash flow for the unrestricted fund balance. Now, that is just indirect on the indirect unrestricted fund balance, and the programs do have restricted fund balance, but we're looking at only having the debt service come from our indirect or administration of general funds. And one of the things in looking at our budget and to live within our means, we obviously don't want the cash to haul, and want to look at being effective and efficient that the commission will not finance more than $2.2 million in order to stick within, number one, our budget, but also within the current capacity of the Alamooral Commission. So looking at the location of the facility, Prequince County has designated property within their Commerce Center to the commission. The commissioners have it on their agenda to hold a public hearing in October and to deed that property over to the commission. And then the Alamooral Board of...yes, sir?
How many acres is that?
Approximately two acres, plus or minus. They're waiting the final design from the architect in order to have that exact figure.
And there's no cost for the land?
That is correct. The architect has been chosen by the Alamooral Commission Board of Delegates. That was done, we went through an RFP process, and that was done in June. Oakley Collier Architects, Rocky Mount, is the architect and engineer of record. And then A&amp;C Project Solutions has been chosen to manage and protect the interests of the commission for this election of the architect through the entire process.
You know the plan in an auditorium, like maybe seating like this?
Not in auditorium, but one of the things we requested was that there be flex space divided that we could use for meeting space. A good example is, we have our annual aging conference that we have 300 people that come to, and we're always looking for additional space, so we're able to host a meeting that side, but it won't be permanent seating, as we wanted to make sure that there's as much flexibility as we possibly can, not only for our organization, but for our member government and our stakeholders within the region. So looking at the financial analysis, for 20 years at 3.25 USDA financing, the current cost of the building is $3 million, with a down payment of $800,000. Total finance would be $2.2 million, with an annual payment, principal and interest payment of $151,313.54. One of the things that was questioned at the manager's meeting yesterday was if USDA had a prepayment penalty, and I've had confirmation from them that if we decide to pay off the debt early, there is not a prepayment penalty. They...their financing is a permanent financing, and they've never, in the life of the community facilities manager, has never heard of a prepayment penalty. So it was good to have that confirmed today. And looking at the annual utilities, the...so the annual expense would be $171,313.54. And then looking at the 40-year option would be same cost for the building, down payment, our annual payment is much less, and part of the reason of looking at the 40-year, number one, have flexibility of entering into a formal 30-year note, but being able to extend that note up to 40 years with a total annual expense of $127,050. So why did we look at that over the 20-year option? One of the things is that we did not want to change or do structural or have to send a special assessment to our counties in order to pay for a facility. And we believe in being fiscally responsible and using taxpayer funding in the most appropriate and fiscally responsible way without assessing extra responsibility to our counties. And looking at the resolution that you've been provided is that the counties will agree to be...continue to be another of the local...or of the Alamooral Government Commission, of the Alamooral Commission, and that's a requirement of the local government commission, and that would be for the life of the lending instrument, and of course, allow us to enter into tax-free financing. So what happens if the Alamooral Commission ceases to exist? The counties, as members of the commission, and really, the counties own the commission, it's through your dues as well as your support through our programs that the commission is yours, you're the designers of the original charter, and the counties use the building as collateral for the loan and have the opportunity to dispose of the property, and based on pro-rata share of the...or pro-rata share of the per capita dues, then the counties will pursue funding back for that. The Prequince County manager did state yesterday that he would like for the county to be reimbursed for the fair market value of the property, and he indicated that would be $40,000. However, through, as you know, after construction, you do have an appraisal of the property in order to enter into that final financing stage, so that would be to be determined. So how will the commission pay for the facility? Will pay for the facility through our current per capita dues structures without a special assessment to the county, and will pay for the facility from federally-approved indirect rate. And when I first started almost three years ago, the first item, first task that the board put in front of me was to get the Alamooral Commission's indirect cost rate under control and now provide an in-depth analysis and then get a federally-approved rate, because that had not been done for a number of years, and the federal, oh, and the circular guidelines were not being followed. So within that first six months of being at the commission, we were able to go through the analysis of staff and of services and break down what the programs were responsible for, what they could be charged for, what they could not be charged for, and then submit that study now on an annual basis to our federal agency, which is the US Department of Commerce, Economic Development and Administration. And they've approved a rate of 31%, however, the commission operates on 26%, and we have the lowest indirect rate of all the regional councils in the state of North Carolina, and we put aside that extra 5% into our honor reserve fund balance, and that's the portion, 5% of how we will pay the additional portion of the debt service versus what our current expenses are. So what are the next steps? The next steps will be that the architect will present a design to the board, Commission Board, in September, and we'll be working to get not only our counties on board, answer any questions that you may have, but also look forward to having a contractor in place so over the next 18 months, we can enter into construction if our counties approve us in doing so, and have a new facility in celebration of our 50 years of being a regional council of government and economic development district on behalf of the region.
Sounds great. My first question is, the Alamooral Commission Board consists of, I believe, 10 members from each county.
Mm-hmm.
I'll be able to board members, you have?
We have 14 board members. We have 10 elected officials, one from each county, as appointed by the county commissioners, and then we have four at-large members that are non-elected members that rotate off the board every two years.
I'm curious to know, I'm sure this plan was presented to the board before.
Yes.
What was the result of those coming out from our commission board?
It was unanimous for not only moving forward with the RFP for design... It was unanimous for not only moving forward with the RFP for design of the building and, as well as the, um, selection of the architect.
So all county representatives said in word, word favor?
Yes.
As well as the location?
Yes.
We've had this.
Yes.
Um, in reading this before today, I noticed that you used the words that were mandated by the LGC to participate, so we know what the answer is. Um, and you gave us a few, uh, you said September, you gave us some dates there, some stories there. Um, so, by mandate, we endorse it, and we move forward. I'm thinking for our budget, um, when, when is the first installment going to be requested from us, from our?
There won't be, it won't be, because we will not be asking for an additional assessment from our counties. That's why we presented the proposal as a forty-year. We, you pay an annual dues based on per capita structure.
So until our dues, or due again, we won't hear, we won't be asking for any more money too?
That is correct.
And we pay the dues in July, each year.
We send out an, an annual invoice, and as you know, we try to do our stewardship report before those invoices go out, and to, to let you know what your return on investment is with the Alamoar Commission.
Are we totally, fully, do, do we have ten Alamoar?
Right now, we have twenty-five employees, full-time, we have three part-time employees, and if we had additional space, we'd like to hire four more, um, a full-time branch writer and an additional community development planner, as well as an additional youth program coordinator, which we're advertising for.
And then, champion, it's my understanding that we're not going to vote on this yet?
No.
So we have, um, opportunity to discuss it, and decide which way we want to go.
That's true. Um, if you have been, and you have been in the building, that they are currently occupied, the situation there has deteriorated. They had one quite heat?
For sixteen days in January. In fact, the night we had our board meeting, it was fifty-one degrees in our boardroom, because we did not have heat. And the boardrooms, more interior, um, portion of the building, the out, the offices on the outside wall were forty-three roofs.
Short meeting, yeah.
It was a short meeting, it was the night that the, the board approved the RFP for our internal services.
I'm very familiar with that complex. Now, it can be almost that, right?
They do, and they have done some, some work, um, they're in the process of changing the windows, they did have the building deep cleaned, but there, there are some capacity issues with storage we have in our utility room. As you know, you should not be storing, um, program supplies, it should be strictly a utility room, and because of lack of space, and for our nutrition program, we have been storing, um, items in our utility room or in our hallways, and we have sound sitting in our common areas. We're also running external storage facilities for day-to-day operation files and equipment, because we have no, no space in our current facility.
Commissioner Jordan just made a comment that we're not voting for that.
Correct.
But the LGC, you have a timeline, there's a little more response to it, what is that?
Um, we would like to be in front of the LGC in November, so if we could have a response from your, your board, um, in, in September, that would be fantastic.
Any additional questions?
No questions, I would like to make a comment, because Commissioner Jordan, uh, asked a question about your staff, and I had included down twenty-six, did I make a mistake there?
No, no, based on the, the, the staff that would be at the facility, there would be twenty-six there, however, we do have employees that are in outages throughout the region.
Uh, Bill, what do you expect Rose to do? As far as she's saying.
When we look at our current, our current, um, our future needs, we're looking at the, the need for at least six additional staff. Um, our, our need now is four, and then on top of that would be six additional as we're growing our programs. And it's interesting to see, going back through the history of everything that the commission used to do, and how we're, we're revamping those programs and bringing them back to provide more value, and so recently we need more employees.
So you have a group?
Yes.
And, of course, this is one of the conditions that, you know, is here in our community. Every day, people get wheels on wheels here, and the confluence of the issues. That is through coordinated by the Alamoar Commission. Um, and I think, um, Brooklyn Hardware has each yours, with, by, um, skills for workers' training, so it is something that comes back to the community.
Absolutely.
All right. Yes, I was just talking to Commissioner Bell, and then just put this in a little bit of perspective, uh, seventy square, thousand square foot building, we're talking about a building about a hundred foot, a hundred and seventy foot, uh, wide and long, a previous size facility.
Yes.
Uh, I'll tell you that, uh, that's a lot of space.
But now, part of that is that flex space, so that they don't have to go outside, and that's.
Yeah, about five thousand square feet, and with that, you have, if you'll have, bring all the external storage internally, you'll have shared work rooms, um, file, file room. Well, actually, one of the things, instead of having built out offices for our frontline employees, or one of the recommendations that we sent over to the architect, is looking at flex cubicles, so you can have some pods for your employees that work at, as team, teams, and they, that's been a, a successful approach at one of the councils of government outside of, um, Charlotte, and they just moved into our facility that their employees really enjoy it, because it, it provides them not only flexibility to move their space around, but it also allows creative and innovative data thinking.
Well, you'd be, uh, you know, we have our district meetings, um, county commissioners that I'm, I'm reading, and we've gone to, well, Washington, places like Williamson, would you be housing those type of meetings?
We could, yes, um, and what?
If you, if you were, would the LGC be paying you something for use of the building?
They would.
Okay, so there'd be some revenue there?
There would be some revenue.
It's a, it's a.
Or the, it's the County Commissioners Association, and then, um, one of the, the thoughts is, we don't have a presence with the Rural Center in our region as well as the school of government and being able to host some of those regional meetings centrally in the region as well.
Also, when the, this building that you are currently in, it was owned by Quinones County because the, um, we could not own property, and I mean, and that legislation has been changed, or the German statute has been changed, so that they can have.
Real ownership.
Real ownership.
Yes.
So it makes a difference.
And that was changed in two thousand and six.
And it's not for the, I did want to comment to the statement that, really appreciate getting this type of dialogue well in advance and broken down all on one sheet and compared, so it was a good presentation, and things will be easier for us.
I think it's important that, you know, when you look at the entire, that you're able to look at everything on, on one page, I know it's a little small, but to have it on one page makes a big difference. Thank you.
Are these, are the end rates that you mentioned here on the thirty and forty, are they set rates?
They are set rates by USDA, they set them at every six months, and the current market rate is three point two five percent.
One last thing, one, there's a lot of citizens, where do you all provide workforce development services for Gates County?
At the, at the Department of Social Services.
All right, so you all have all the space there?
We do.
And how, what days will we do meet?
I believe it, it's on Wednesdays and Fridays, but I will double check exactly what day that is.
Here, here in the county?
Yes, yes, and, um, any services that are needed, you can also get those at ncwork.gov, which is the, the facility, um, that the, the state, we, we as the workforce, the board operates under that, but if you're looking for a job and you're not able to go to DSS, you can also look there.
Well, thank you so much for coming and sharing, and we will take this up, um, in September.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Have a good day.
Go ahead. Thank you. Okay, um, second, a night's delegation was April McCall. McCall, David, David, right there. Somebody's coming on. A football mom.
Yeah.
How are you doing?
Good.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you too, my friend. Good morning.
Morning.
I'm a little nervous, y'all, I'm very, y'all are very.
Oh, wouldn't I, it's a little guy.
Just a little thing. Um, my name is called April Network today, so she's on April Navy. I have the director, they, Coach Davis, and also, no, no, excuse me. Um, they, they, they are the directors of Gates County Hurricanes. We recently have changed our name to North Carolina Hurricanes. Um, we took it upon ourselves to, um, get incorporated, so we are now North Carolina Hurricanes Incorporated. Um, we presented, we presented you all with, um, some fingers, some individuals that have been, give you a little information about the, the Gates County Hurricanes Football League, as being cheerleaders, would first like to thank the county commissioners and the Gates County Community Center for their support of the Hurricanes football and cheer program and your anti-support over the years through the use of your facilities. We are grateful for this ability. As you all know, the Hurricanes League is a nonprofit organization which relies heavily on private donations, sponsorship, participation fees, and parent fundraising to serve the youth of Gates County. Our league provides participation fees and parent fundraising to serve the youth of Gates County. Our league provides county youth with a program that is otherwise unavailable in Gates County. One thing our organization puts great focus on is character building. While we watch our league progress physically on the football field, we also put emphasis into personal development, development. The last season, our board was at their own direction, decided to plan a fundraiser separate from the team supplies fundraiser, and we were able to make a small donation to the Susan G. Komen Foundation for breast cancer research. Um, just to stand upon that, we did find out that that money stays local, it's the, um, time war branch of Susan G. Komen, so that money didn't go anywhere, you know, it doesn't help us at all, but it does. Uh, we were so proud of their decisions, um, and the drive that they put forth to help with that. We did have a representative come, so our homecoming game, and he accepted a check, um, she gave the boys t-shirts, and they were just really proud of themselves that it was in the newspaper. And speaking with our neighboring counties, all of them do offer youth tackle football, and many offer cheerleading as well, many of our neighbors utilize the private-public partnership that the county and the Hurricanes currently have in place. The private par, the private-public partnership reduces the county expense through staffing for coordination games and practices, and at the same time, it provides a highly desired service to the county youth. Additionally, many of our neighboring boards of commissioners and city councils provide some, if not full, financial assistance to their football program. Attached to this is a documentation of the neighboring county's funding sources. The Hurricanes, before you today, are requesting consideration of funding for sponsorship from the county board of commissioners. We understand that your fiscal year, two thousand seventeen, eighteen budget is, has been adopted prior to our supplemental disfunding request, however, we ask that you consider allocating some money within the current budget to assist in any way possible. Um, this year, we did send out sponsor letters to the local business, businesses, um, to the high school athletic, um, programs. We sent, um, letters to some of the neighboring county's businesses as well. Right now, we do have sixty participants. Um, our coaches, that we have on staff, we have about twelve, they pay theirselves, um, the monies to get that round check, they are, of course, registered checks. Um, they have a USA football certification program that they go through online, um, there are several courses in tackle football, coaches, coach safety, um, the dehydration piece of it, uh, that is ten dollars, they pay for out of pocket, and then when they accomplish it, they get a certificate. Um, we have Mr. Storm Buck to donate his time to teach CPR, so they have completed that, and that's something that they also pay for out of pocket, um, for the certification, which is one hundred dollars. So, um, the coaches, they all work full-time jobs, and they still take upon themselves the volunteer time. A lot of them don't even have boys on teams, um, it's just something that they love doing, or they know the Hurricanes have been around for quite some time, and they just wanted to live on. Um, we have the full support of the high school athletic, um, director, Coach Harold, and then, well, it's Coach Biggs. Um, he took the coaches into his classroom last week and gave them some pointers, and, uh, we just want to line the young boys up to get ready to go to middle school biking. We've also been in good contact with Coach Barbara at the middle school, and then, you know, when they become future parents, I mean, time, time flies, as you all know, so it's going to be, uh, quick. Right now, they're front of us in their little, but they're going to graduate tomorrow, so we just like to try to keep a good relationship with everyone and line them up to do things appropriately. Um, we, um, we are, like I said, a nonprofit organization, they're in a paid position, um, we are insured. Most counties that fund the football do it through their recreation budget, it's not a special appropriation. Um, and not all football, not all support football financially, but many do, um, us trying, running it privately, we feel like takes care of the overhead costs, this are , you know, that round checks and the employees and, and that sort of thing, the insurance, that's something we, we handle ourselves. Um, and so in essence, we save the county the expense, but we offer, uh, service to the youth and the families that, you know, is, is well, well needed. We, like I said, this year, we have had a, a tremendous show of support, and last year, we did not have enough coaches or boys to create three teams, so we, we, just instead of just throwing the program away altogether last year, we decided to do a combined team of, and the boys, they did pretty good. This year, we are able to have three individual acres, and, um, like I said last night, we counted over sixty, sixty boys at practices. Now the defense is on, I'm sure that we'll have more, because we have plenty that's placed in there, so, um, that's pretty much all I have. Um, go through that with questions, though, and we'll call them, they'll work.
What's that number that you said, was that it last time?
We had over, we had sixty-one, actually, we counted exactly sixty-one.
Probably going to be over the seventy-five, eighty, we give it essentially.
I'm sort of appreciative of the assets that you all put in, the compassion and concern to build up our youth, because we need that.
Yes.
Yes, indeed, and, um, for the one that takes that on, I think it's commendable, and it's great work. Um, just a question or two. How much is, if you don't mind telling us, how much is your annual budget? Well, you all operate on, if you're aware of, of what your annual budget is.
To be honest, the budget, um, that we, we don't have a, a set budget, a set amount, we know what we would like to go into the next year in our Gates County. Um, we try to make sure that we have at least.
As far as the budget, insurance is eleven hundred dollars a year. Um, equipment to fit the child out is where most of the cost is. The helmets are one hundred dollars a piece, the shoulder pads are forty-five to sixty dollars a piece. It costs sixty dollars for the child to play. I've tried to open it, the numbers are down. When you up the registration, it's expensive, you just don't have the number of kids playing. I can't open it to fund, to fund the team itself, because you won't have the kids playing. Um, for the fundraisers, you know, we, we do everything we can, as far as color watches and donuts and everything that we could possibly do to raise money, it's just not enough. I don't want the organization to fold, I mean, we're doing everything that we can, I mean, we spend hundreds of dollars out of our pockets every year for bottles and equipment bags and water bottles, and we buy a lot of this stuff out of our pockets ourselves. It's just, the funding is just not there to... It's just, the funding is just not there to be, to keep it afloat like it needs to be. You know, and safety has to be a concern, you know, that's first and foremost, is keeping the kids safe. Um, the program that we're under is funded by the NFL, it's USA Football. Um, the certifications, I mean, it doesn't get any more legit as far as being safer than it, you know. You have, and you have concussion classes that we have to go to. Um, weight to tackle, weight to ride, you know, you just can't throw a kid out, out there and tell him, you know, go play football. That's not what football is coming to, you know. Ten years from now, it's gonna be a lot different now than when maybe y'all play or somebody in this room playing, you know. So, we're trying to keep up with the times as far as it, as it changes. You know, it is changing sport, you know, and as it changes, it gets costly. The helmets are fifty dollars no more, they're not like a hard hat you would wear on the job site. You know, they have to be, you know, certain, I want to order for the kids to play, and it's costly. You know, so I do the best I can do with the budget, the money I have the best I can. You know, I got in with the same guy that supplies the equipment for the middle school and the high, and the high school and Eastons, and, I mean, this is the first year that I got up with him. But he really wants our business. He cuts us the absolute best price that anybody could ever cut us as far as buying the right stuff and, you know, padding them out and things like that, you know. So, it's just, it's just, it's hard to keep the table flooded with what we can charge for registration and what it costs, you know, you know, you know, equipment. With that being said, it's a lot more to play with football money-wise than it is in, in any other sport. You know, it's just, the money's there, you have to value it, you have to value, you know, proper stuff in order to play. And that's just where a lot of it is.
All right, now, I'm chairman.
Yes.
And the board. As has been pointed out, we've, uh, already approved our budget for 2017. I noticed on our expenditure statement, uh, for the end of twenty sixteen-seventeen, on the first page of W-5, under our miscellaneous emergency fund, we allocated thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, we're gonna use six thousand. I would not be opposed to, uh, donate a thousand dollars out of our miscellaneous funds to support the, uh, the opportunity, uh, Hurricane Football. Well, I, I would make a motion.
Maybe we need to say, I mean, talk about it.
Well, maybe we may need to discuss that and see what, you know, what we can get, what, what, maybe I...
That's why I, you know, for us, that's what I'm saying, that, you know, M Y I.
But I just threw that out there, just to say, you know, this is what we, we allocated thirteen thousand four fifty. We utilized six thousand eighty-nine, so we're gonna have six thousand plus dollars going into rollover fund balance. And, um, so, yeah, being it is a noble effort on the part of those who are, uh, buying services to the county, I wouldn't be opposed to, uh, make that donation.
And if I can just say that, you know, as Coach said, this year, we just, we have paid for it previously. This year, we decided because of participation numbers, and we don't want to have to turn the board away. You know, um, a lot of them, we don't, we don't have enough equipment to cover, to cover them. And, you know, we do pay a lot out of our pocket, and we just, we can't afford to outfit them all, um, ourselves. So, we, we, that is a reason why we're reaching out for help. Um, usually, we just do our fundraisers, and that carries us over, we buy things as needed. And right now, we have, last year, we did, we did purchase twenty helmets from, or twenty-five helmets from the fundraiser efforts we did last year, um, but we need twenty-five more. Um, and as I said, they're a hundred dollars, they're about your five feet, that's true, so.
For the time you're running, please, Madison, should you hear your, or so?
And of course, I know that all the helmets have a check here.
Yes, actually.
Every three years, that's the reason, you can buy a cheaper helmet. You can't research a, a cheaper helmet. The helmet that I'm buying, I refuse to put them out there in the bottom of the barrel. I mean, it's styrofoam, it's, they're just, they're like the costume for Halloween. I wouldn't put my kid in it, seriously.
And listen, with so much of concussion and all, something you want to...
These are high school saints, saints and helmets for youth football. It's not just the, uh, equipment that costs. It's the concession stand, to oath in it, is upwards of five hundred dollars for one helmet. Okay, that's, I mean, that's what it costs. You can, you know, you can go to BJ's and Sam's and buy this up yourself, and you're gonna be out a minimum of five hundred dollars to oath, to oath, to oath it. To pay the refs, the referees, it's four hundred and fifty dollars for three games at home. We pay that out of our pocket. I pay it out of my pocket. The, you know, this gentleman here resigned me, we pay them out of our pocket, you know. So, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's just hard to keep it afloat. It's just, it's not just the cost of helmets and shoulder pads, it's everything involved.
Well, I do think we need to kind of take a look at where it's what we want to do and, you know, not make a snap decision, but, um...
But thank you for, thank you for...
But I mean, I'm not saying I'm not opposed to, I just want to kind of study the numbers and, you know, look at what we...
If you all need anything else, I have a cool list, and for the football and cheer program of the equipment that we do in here, the cheer program, um, actually, um, kind of diminished over the past few years because, um, there was a death. This year, we've had, um, oh, a woman stepped up who wasn't a capable speaker today. But she stepped up and decided to run the cheer program alongside us, um, so the girls can have an opportunity. I mean, at a lot of the games, past few years, they were just, sisters would be out there cheering for, for their brothers. And, you know, the parents, we've, uh, bought all these shirts locally from, um, a local business here in the county, um, to support our boys, you know, that, that money doesn't go to anything for them. It's just, you know, like I said, the love of the kids, the love of the game, it's something we decided to do. So, this year, our cheer program is starting off from absolutely nothing. Um, they have the full support of Ms. Renee from the High School Cheer Program, um, there. She's actually gonna do a cheer camp with the girls in the high school, um, the high school cheer girls and, and the girls. And Biggie is also, they're trying to get a camp going for the middle school, high school, and Hurricanes boys. Um, so that, you know, the older boys can kind of mentor the younger boys and that sort of thing. I mean, I just think it's a lot, a lot of different good greatness going on this year, um, for the Hurricanes. And we appreciate any support that you give, and...
With the cheers, how many, how many...
We, we're gonna start small this year, because there, we're gonna have one cheer team of twenty girls. Next year, we will, at Sam's, have three teams per, um, football team.
Yes, sir.
If I may, um, the sheet that you gave us with prices, and I see you've got multiples here, like, uh, equipment bags, you need three of those.
Yes.
If we, so if we took a calculator to this, is this the immediate need that you see that you're gonna have?
Yes.
Not, we can find all of it, because just one number is pretty good.
Yes, that's right, yes, sir.
So, like the shoulder pads, twenty-one, two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Okay, well, this, I'd like to make a motion, um, well, first of all, did we have a motion down here?
No, they did not.
Okay. Certainly, we certainly would do want to digest it, look at the numbers, and, uh, and get back with you in a time of magnitude. Uh, so, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, that we get our county manager to look at our budget and look over these numbers and get back with us. Um, and I'd like for her, when she's looking for money, to look, uh, for at least two thousand dollars.
The only place that, the only place that it's there would be in the miscellaneous line.
Okay, well, if we can address it, uh, at our next meeting?
Well, that would be beginning of September, or you can agree to add it to under new business to that date.
Well, I think it would be nice to, um, to, to have Hannah to look at this and, and doubt. But you'll take the money if we give you some in September.
Absolutely. I'm not trying to rush your decision at all, but in September, um, sixteen is our season opener. So, um...
So, we have time, if, you know, we definitely would like to get things ordered and, and to us as soon as possible.
On the county manager's column, I will draw my motion, but something I'd like for it to be on the agenda for September. Okay, and I have a two thousand dollar figure in mind, I'll just put that out there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come out to our game?
And now, on Thursday, no, Saturday. Thursday is J D, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will start with, uh, Under Knights delegations. Uh, of course, you have to sign up and have an opportunity to sign up up here. Uh, we do have a time limit, limit on the, um, Under Knights delegations of five minutes. Please state your name and address when you come, and direct your comments to the board of commissioners, to us. So, first and foremost, who lives is Harold with... And we want to keep tabs, but, because we have a number.
That's what I have to do, Harold.
Good morning.
I'm standing before you this morning, as I did back in two thousand and fourteen, as a voice for the animals in this county. Um, mainly the dogs, and I am representing this morning the dog around Tree Lane. As all of you are aware, a dog suffered a horrible, horrible death and died. I'm not here to blame, and I'm not here to bash, but I am here to say facts. The fault lies first and foremost with the owner. The owner was negligent, it was cruel, and obviously abusive, that a dog laid there for twenty-four hours and suffered in a hundred degree temperature chained with a heavy chain to a plastic doghouse that none of us here today would have been sitting. The next blame, or they blame, the next fault goes with the Sheriff's Department. Animal Control was called, but he was not on duty. So, the call did not get answered. So, we need to have somebody, when Animal Control is not working on duty, to answer concerned citizens' calls of animals in distress. This was an emergency, this wasn't a stray dog running around. This was a dog in apparent distress, suffering horribly in the heat. The only person that witnessed it were the four other dogs on the property. They were in the backyard, chained, one in the kennel, and they were the only ones that hurt us distress, hurt us suffering, and nearly died. And they're still there, they're still chained, they're still in a pen, and they're still struggling to survive in the heat. We've got hundreds of dogs like this in the county, and when I stood before you in two thousand and fourteen, I explained all of this to you, and I asked you, please, to ride around in the county and look at the conditions of the dogs. We have got to update our ordinance again. They are still suspending, they are still not progressive enough. They are still allowing cruel, negligent, abusive owners to get a pass go, get a pass out of jail and go. And this can't happen anymore. We have a moral obligation to make this right. I got a petition together, and I have two hundred and twenty-four signatures. And I met some amazing people, and some of them are here today, that share this passion. But they didn't think they could do anything about it, because when they called Animal Control and Animal Control's never shown up, or Animal Control has never returned a phone call, they thought that was it. But we've got, we've got to do better. This is what, four years later, and I'm standing before you again, we, we've got to do better. Commissioner Hawke, we've got to do better. I mean, please, I know last time when I stood before you, you told me, quote unquote, "We cannot tell people how to love their animals." And you're right, we can't. But we can tell them how they have to care for them. And we can give them standards that there's no reading in between the lines, it's black and white, that says, "If you have a dog chained up to a doghouse, a plastic doghouse in the middle of the sun with absolutely no shade, that does not mean shelter." That's just like you and I sitting outside in our car during the summer, it's the same thing. That is not shelter, that offers that dog no comfort whatsoever. And to give them twenty-four hours to feed or water, when you've got a hundred degree temperature outside, and within an hour, that water's already hot, within three hours, that water's already starting to become stagnant, six hours, it's worse, twenty-four hours, would you drink it? Uh-uh, no. So, we have got to hold our residents that are irresponsible accountable, not give them loopholes to get out of it, and say, "This is it." I've got two hundred and twenty-four signatures.
I'll give it to you for the commissioner.
Uh-huh. And this is a copy of the, um, update that these two hundred and twenty-four people that signed are passionate about. These changes, it was consulted with Animal Control officers in other areas, um, to make sure, okay, to make sure that, um, you know, we were, were doing it within reason. Um, some of it still needs to be tweaked, because I really questioned the fact that it's twelve hours. Um, might want to make that six hours, but, um, I want you all to please look at it. Um, the page where the signatures are is asking for us to at least get a response back. Um, we, we, we've got to do better, we, we have to do better. Um, I don't want to stand before you again, um, I thought that we were done, but, um, we, we've got to do better. So, I'm pleading with you for those dogs out there that have no voice, to, to be their voice, along with the rest of us.
Thank you, we will accept this petition, and we'll take this under our box. Thank you. Um, Denise Miller, please. Maybe say your name and address.
My name is Denise Miller, I live at three sixty-five San Vans Road in the little town of Eau, North Carolina, two seven nine three five. I'm here because for years I wrote letters to the Gates County Index on this very subject, animal control, animal cruelty. Now, instead of writing, I am here speaking. We in Gates County and the Romanoke, Chawan area had a champion, well-trained, and irreplaceable member of the Gates County Sheriff's Department. He was responsible for seizing over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in illegal drugs and monies. His name was Cal, a magnificent German Shepherd that we all loved. His care in life was treasured, respected, and top of the line. Is that not what we deserve all dogs to have? Or do we want the heavy tangled chains around their necks? Do we want them without life-saving food and water on a hundred degree day or a freezing cold day? Or do we want them to be part of a family where they are granted proper food, proper shelter, and maybe a pat on the head? For a decade, we raised some of North Carolina's first guide dogs for the blind, and it was an honor. But all dogs deserve that, the basic care, food, shelter, and at least love. If that is something that people cannot do, they do not deserve to have an animal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Okay, Gary Ingram?
Good morning, my name is Gary Ingram, I live at one twenty-seven Desert Road, Fort Peak, and have so for the past eleven years. I come before you this morning to express my concern about cruel and inhumane treatment of the animals here in Gates County, and to implore responsible actions to be taken by you, the commissioners, to revise the codes and ordinances that are currently in effect. It was a great part that I went... It was a great horror that I witnessed the recent pictures of the suffering dogs chained in the scorching sun with no water and a joke for an alleged shelter. It's my understanding that one of those domesticated animals came to its demise because of the suffering. Even after this was reported and later witnessed by Animal Control and the sheriff, I find it incomprehensible that actions weren't taken and the animals not seen or how the sheriff found it hard to recognize this abuse and needed further investigation with no actions taken. What exactly wasn't clear and obvious evidence of this abuse? Discretion is a wonderful tool in law enforcement, but this was nothing more than dereliction. Violations not clearly covered by our ordinances are certainly found within our state codes. Law enforcement officers are sworn to uphold all state, local, and federal codes and laws. It's not just dogs being abused here in Gates County. It's horses and other farm animals. These animals feel hunger and pain just as we would if we were placed in the same circumstances. You, the board members of the commission, need to revise our current codes and ordinances to reflect the needs and humane treatment of these animals. I'd like to thank you now for your time and your understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Doug Bailey.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. Doug Bailey, I'm in Fort Peake. Beautiful downtown Fort Peake. First of all, I'd like to clear up a couple of items that were brought up. I have a copy in front of me of the actual law as it is right now. And I'd like to read into the record what the definition of a proper shelter, shelter is. Let me find it. Sorry. It's section 3. I'm sorry, I'm not prepared. Anyway, I remember reading that what it says, it says it has to have three walls and it has to provide shelter from wind, rain, ice, snow, all those types of things. I think that that particular standard needs to be revised. As the chairman of the Ad hoc Committee for Animal Control back in 2013, I tried my best to get that written to a point where there was no gray area there as far as what the animal control officer could look at and determine what was a proper shelter. Under the guidelines of the American Society for Protection of Cruelty Animals, the U.S. Humane Society, and various other groups, a proper shelter is one that has a roof on it, it has three sides with an opening large enough for the animal to go into, turn around, and move freely, and it must have a floor so that the animal is not laying in its own feces, mud, rain, mud, whatever. That was not written into this law. Okay? That needs to be changed because these animals deserve better, and this is what it said. The majority of the people in this county that I have talked to think that the people that are tasked with taking care of these animals do not look at them as a pet or as a domestic animal or as part of their family. They are put out in a yard as a burglar alarm. So, they're not treated any more than that. They're just out there so if somebody tries to get onto the property, the dog will bark and let the owner know. That has to change. And I don't know how we can do that, but that has to change. Proper respect for your neighbors as far as dogs that are harmful to the community, such as allowing animals to run free without restraint, not on a leash, not inside a fenced-in area. I can tell you from my own experience, about two months ago, my wife was bitten by a dog because it was running free. And she had to go through that trauma, which was not good. We called the animal control people and they did come out and they checked the animal and they, they took it and had it checked to make sure it had its rabies shots and all that. So, they did respond, but it was the next day when they did that. I just think that a lot of what we have in here that was passed by the commissioners back in 2013 are not sufficient. We gave you a set of 13 recommendations back then, if you remember. And if you don't remember, I can email them to you because I still have them. Six of those recommendations were, "We'll, we'll look into it" or "We'll talk about it and get back to you" or "No, we can't do that because it'll make the hunters in the area mad." I understand why people are frustrated because I was so frustrated being the chairman of that committee because I saw the passion that these people had. I knew that they were about helping the animals. And having been an animal advocate all my life, I had that same passion. And we worked for six months to put these standards together and we brought them before the commission and seven out of the 13 recommendations were passed. With modifications, by the way. They weren't the ones that we gave. Okay? All right, I appreciate your time. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Anne Han.
Good morning.
Good morning. Caroline. Thank you for hearing our comments. My name is Anne Han, 66, Millstone Road. In Gates County, this is all I want to get a little bit. Oh, there it is. Ooh. Okay. And I have a little fog in my throat, excuse me. In Gates County, we have weather extremes. In the summer, temperatures sometimes go past 100 degrees with horribly high humidity. In the winter, sometimes we have four or five days consecutively in the 20-degree area. Some people have no empathy for other people, so it's understandable that they may not have empathy for other animals. Tied animals on a leash in the above-mentioned temperatures is just so horribly cruel. The people who do this maybe would only understand if they had to trade places with these animals, even for only one day. Maybe they would get an idea of how inhumane the treatment of these animals really is. These animals feel hunger, they feel thirst, and they feel a lot of pain. And I just wish that these animals could feel loved and maybe they could feel happiness that they deserve. We must speak up for helpless animals. If we are truly the most evolved beings on this planet, then we must speak, care about their health and their well-being. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Daphne.
Daphne. I'm not sure what I have there.
It's McMinovich.
Good morning.
I apologize.
No worries at all. Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Honorable Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Daphna McMinovich and I'm the Senior Vice President of Cruelty Investigations for PETA, which is headquartered at 501 Front Street in Norfolk. As you well know, a chained pit bull recently baked to death in Gatesville. A concerned neighbor who is here today saw the dog restless, panting heavily, and foaming at the mouth, and she did the right thing. She called the sheriff's office for help. The dog was tethered by a heavy metal chain in the full sun and he apparently had a bone-dry water bucket. Even though this was clearly an emergency, the sheriff's office did not send anyone by. The Good Samaritan called PETA the following day when she saw that the dog appeared deceased and still no one from the sheriff's office responded. We rushed out and arrived shortly before the deputy. We offered to pay for and arrange, or arrange, either way, an necropsy, a post-mortem examination on this dog's body. The deputy declined our offer and asked us to leave the property, which we did. We then sent the sheriff's office and all of you a letter reiterating our offer the same day. No one replied. On July 5th, the responding deputy advised our caseworker that the owner was allowed to dispose of this dog and that no charges would be filed against him for the terrible suffering and deadiful death this dog was subjected to. There are still several pit bulls chained on this property in similar condition, apparently to be used for breeding. Heat stroke is a gruesome and terrifying way to die. Dogs typically lose control of their bladder, they go into shock, they vomit blood, they have bloody diarrhea, they go into kidney and liver failure, they suffer brain damage, muscle tremors, and seizures, then they lose consciousness and finally die. You saw a photo of the dog who suffered this terrible death on the front page of the paper. The photos you see here are all dogs chained right here in Gates County and these are all recent photographs. The manner in which this dog was kept is not isolated, unfortunately. This summer, our field workers have found dogs in distress as well as others who have died at the end of their chains, including this one, I'm sorry, who still had a 28-pound chain wrapped around the skeletal remains of his neck. Kept out of sight and out of mind, chained dogs are often deprived of food, water, shelter, shade, and basic veterinary care. They suffer during all-weather extremes from sweltering summer days to self-freezing winter nights. Dogs deserve better than to watch life pass them by as they silently suffer physical neglect and the psychological torment of isolation. Would everyone who is here and supports a legislative ban on unattended chaining of dogs, please stand up? We thank you for your considerations and we urge you to add Gates County to the list of local jurisdictions that have legislated against sentencing man's best friend to a life sentence without parole. We would happily assist with drafting such an ordinance and hope that you will consider it as an emergency measure. I wanted to thank you and thank all the citizens who came today and the citizens who spoke today.
Thank you. Anthony Saunders.
Good morning. My name is Anthony Saunders and I'm a resident of 798 Wilton Road in Gates. I've been looking at all my life, all 60 years of my life. I stand here, first of all, to make it very clear, I stand here on behalf of our service department based on the animal control ordinance that I've had an opportunity to read over several times. I feel that the sheriff's department, the sheriff and the sheriff's department, animal control, that they followed the law as far as they could. I'm not saying the ordinance is perfect, but based on what I've read, the things that they did, the procedures they took, they went as far as they could go by the law of the ordinance. Again, I see the pictures that people have taken of the dogs, but my question also, if we're so protective of our animals here in the county, I see no picture of horses, cows, hogs that live in unliving conditions that are not pleasing to everybody. So, I mean, I think the sheriff's department did what they could do. The conditions that these, some of these families keep their dogs and stuff, I agree with it done. But to sit here and go at our animal control people and our sheriff's department simply because their hands are tied on certain things, I don't think it's fair. But I do support the sheriff's department in what they did. Thank you.
Thank you. William Riley.
Good morning, everyone. I guess everyone is going to say about everything I had to say. Everyone summed it up. Other than, there's a lot to talk about with this. I had spoken with Commissioner Prudential about a lot of this early on. The property, down in what this incident happened, belongs to me. And also, the neighbors that made the complaint probably belongs to me. So, that created a little problem on the internet. And there's a lady here that spoke tonight, I mean, I'm sorry, there's one that contacted me about this and we got everything straight on that matter. The main thing I see is the chain law should be abolished. The kennels and the way people keep animals in this area needs to be cleaned up as far as if they're going to be in a kennel. I would say a 10-foot tent with shade, raised floor, adequate housing. And in cases like when this incident happened, they should have a family. I mean, I'd always go to retrievers and I've probably got more dogs than all the all men here have got together. And I make Casey's stations. I sell them all over the United States and some of them out of the States. And, you know, I've been raising them for like 25 years, so I have a pretty good track record of what should be done. And it's up to you guys to step up to the plate and get with the times for the way things should be done. And there are other animals in the area, not just dogs, primarily horses, that need the attention to. They're not fed properly, they don't have enough acreage to take care of them, housing and so forth. And off the subject of this to the sheriff's department, I will say on behalf of them, they have done what they can do based on the rules and regulations that were adopted. And this young man, not taken up to him, but on his behalf, since this incident, I have spoken to him and I also spoke with the neighbors. And everything is being done according to the rules that are adopted, but it's still not enough for, because this area, he doesn't have any trees on his lot to help for adequate shade. I had recommended some temporary things for them to do. What has been done, I don't know. I had been talking to Deputy Eric Wall. In fact, he calls me continuously like this and keeps up with me on what's going on. He has been to my home. He has seen what I do. He has gotten somewhat educated on the way things should be done. And he made a statement the last time he was at my house. He said, "Well," he said, "if you can take care of this many dogs at the rate you're doing, and I don't see nothing wrong." He said, "There's no reason anyone can't take care of them." There's just some things that need to be changed to address an animal or breathing creature, whatever it may be, what, a dog, cat, whatever. I think I've highlighted everything I need to say. I'm sure there's more, but I can't think of it right now because I'm a busy man. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Ronald Muir.
My name is Ronald Muir. I live at sixteen Fourth Town Road in Gates, 279 2B7. My reason for standing this morning is because I'm concerned for our youth and adults at the community center. And my concern is that there's no air conditioning in the community center where the youth do cheerleading or practice in that facility, as well as the adults that come out to support them on the weekend to watch the ballgame. So I would like for the Commissioners to consider putting air conditioning in that building.
Thank you. And Chris Myers. Chris Myers.
My name is Chris Myers, and I live at 228 Basilton Road in Gates. Y'all have been talking about a lot of nuisance laws this morning, and that's here what I'm talking about. Completely totally different, totally different thing. The problem that comes in with our nuisance laws is that there's no teeth behind them. They're mostly civil actions. There's no criminal, maybe I shouldn't say it, criminal analysis behind what people are doing, but when you, when you, don't take into consideration your neighborhood or your community when you do certain things. And they say, "Well, it's my right because I live here and this is my property, and I can choose to do what I want to on my property." When it comes to our nuisance laws, they are all civil, and it leaves it up to the neighbors to actually have to take action, which means that we have to go, we have to hire a lawyer, we have to bring it to civil case law. We know that these things should not be happening. I have a couple pictures here of what I'm going through right now that is absolutely ridiculous. We have a, we have a person here that has, has had up to, has had about five cows, multiple turkeys, chickens, sheep, two sheep, two pigs, all on one acre a length. They have this wired up in a portable electric fence. Now, the North Carolina statute says for livestock, that we're an infenced state, which means that if you have animals of this caliber, livestock, that you need to fence the property in properly to keep them on your property. But it just says reasonable. And what is reasonable? Is reasonable a portable fence that you can put and move around? Or is reasonable knowing that your cows are getting out and going into other people's yards and still not doing anything about it? Is that reasonable? We also have a fencing issue where we had put a solid wall. We have no real fencing law in the, in the county, although there are statutes throughout the state and through other counties too that we can look upon, and it does state that, you know, our, our officials or people that are in the capacity to mandate action against these things, it says that just because it's not in our law or our nuisance ordinance here that we can't address those issues. But I guess that was my time limit, Jack. I would like, if y'all would like to take a look at these, I would like to pass them around.
Certainly we will. It's something.
I've spoken with multiple people in the county, and they all agree that the issue is we just don't have any way to enforce some of these nuisance laws. And I think it needs to be, go take example of different counties where they actually make it like a nuisance, the nuisance law is a misdemeanor instead of a civil action. Not seeing people go to jail, class three misdemeanor can be enforced by the county, where a civil action has to go through the court system to be really enforced. And I think that's, we need to address these nuisance laws.
Thank you, sir. That is, everyone can be signed up. Is there anyone else who would like to come here and just sit? Yes, sir. And what is your name?
Don St. John, 29 H. Luke, Corpi. Some of the words that come in my mind are disgusted, discouraged, disheartened. That one gentleman up there said that his dog, it was an isolated incident. Well, most weekends I like to get out and drive around the county, although I've lived here nine years. And I could drive you around and show you a lot of folks that never see insight at all. Disgusted because you guys took off last month because you had no business. I think you got plenty of business. The assessor just gave us a tax decrease and you gave us a tax increase. So I think you guys ought to go to double or triple sessions because the assessor's going to hit the end down the road, and you're going to say, "Oh, but we need to hit your phone or what?" Because our houses are still over assessed. So just really disheartening, like nine years in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that finishes the delegations, I mean, the unannounced delegations. We'll move on to, and we are going to take all these things into consideration, and we will discuss these. We need a five-minute stand-up brief.
Before we do that, I'd like to thank everybody for coming and everybody for honoring the time allotted. Thank you for being respectful.
Okay, moving to running number five, administrative reports. We have County Manager.
This is for June 17 through July 24th. From June 17 through July 7, I handled approximately twenty items related to planning and zoning. Ms. Cherry began work on July 3rd. We will be working together on the next few months as she becomes more familiar with the Gates County ordinance. And Ms. Cherry will begin providing planning and zoning reports in August. Historic courthouse, there is a very short update later on the agenda, but as of that morning, John Zeller with Clear Skates informed me that Chuck, and I always mispronounce his last name, so don't forget me, assaulted the engineer with Clear Skates, feels differently about the bridge, and asked Mr. Craig, I may butcher his last name, to look at the report. And Craig, at no charge to the county, visited the historic courthouse on July 24th to look at the bridge. And the purpose is to determine if the walls can be saved and the previous plan be used. And as I said, this is later on the agenda because I didn't provide it, received a very short report. Courthouse roof, Metal Roof Consultants Incorporated has inspected the roof and provided the approximate timeline for the project. As you see below, the project bid is due tentatively on September the 7th. Project start is fourteen days after the notice to proceed, with the project duration lasting ninety days. The approximate finish date is December 30th at 17. As far as meetings during that timeframe, on June 26th, I attended an EDA hurricane follow-up meeting where different agencies provided information about programs for hurricane-related projects. Gates County is participating in the Essential Single Family Rehabilitation Law for Disaster Recovery. Those are documents that are also later on the agenda for final approval. On July 12th, the Milcon Advisory Committee met briefly to receive an update on upcoming projects and programs. Do you have any questions?
At our last meeting, we talked about having Rose Turner here in California.
She was unable to be here, she will not be here, I believe, until the September meeting.
She was the one canceled by, I mean, had a commitment. So we're looking forward to hearing from her. Okay, thank you. County Manager, Cass. You're laying.
That's appropriate. Good morning. That's appropriate. You had an opportunity to see the collector's report. We got a revised one naturally with the BTS figures that we're finally doing. We got those posted for you. Any questions or comments, notes of interest on that report?
I just have one question. In 2017, it says $1,448.64. That's where somebody said new construction or?
Actually, ma'am, that is either a discovery deal or it can be a present use rollback deal. In this case, that is discovery. If somebody, we learned of a vehicle, for instance, that's been parked in the yard and they're trying to get it put back on the road naturally, they haven't been paying taxes on it, those kinds of things are a discovery. So that goes in that column.
But that's the thing, you discover or?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Much like a rollback deal, which we haven't had any of those, you know, for rollback for a person yet, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other comments of any sort on the collector's report?
I have a question from a citizen. He had a trailer, had a tag on the trailer. This is a Pullaham trailer.
Utility.
Utility trailer. Has a registration and a tag on it. He sold it. What does he need to do? I mean, I realize DMV.
He should have gotten a receipt if he's turned in that tag, and he could be eligible for a refund. He needs to get that paperwork to us with that receipt he signed and dated.
But if he doesn't do that, you're going to bill him?
No, he won't get a bill, but he'll afford him the opportunity for any refund amount for the period of time that he utilized those tags.
I think it's such a small amount, he's not concerned about the refund, he just wanted to make sure that it was not going to be on your list next year.
No, no.
Was it permanent tag or a one-year renewal?
It was a renewal, it was a renewal tag.
No, a permanent tag, he wouldn't, he wouldn't need to let us know because we bill for those as personal property, so that he could leave a note.
It is the same, I understand.
It's a renewal tag.
Right, okay, we'll leave the extension there.
Okay, I want to give it a write-out, thank you.
Cass, any tasks on refunds?
One refund, that is correct, yes ma'am. Related to a DMV refund, if you will, we have the attached documentation there for you from the taxpayer, refund number one, in the amount of $126.68. That documentation is kind of provided for reference there.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? Seems like I have everything on the property documentation attached or the person did.
So both of you, Chairman? Request for refund number one, in the amount of $126.68. Second?
Motion's been made, part of the second, end of discussion. If not, all those individuals say aye.
Aye.
And it's Ruth 50.
Terrific, thank you.
And GoHail, I think you're fine.
Okay, yes ma'am, all right.
Okay.
All right, I don't have anything further. As the note about the tax notices, we are on track there. We don't foresee any other derailment or any other delays as promised by third week of August, they'll be mailed out, so I just wanted to remind you of it. As my report indicated, that will be the final major task we anticipate in our current camera Keystone software. We'll be making that transition about to into the second week of September, as we're on track. I just wanted to make a boy aware of that as we say farewell from New Shore.
And sure, our citizens will be excited to get their tax bills.
Oh, yes, indeed.
I'm afraid so. So we basically complete with that?
We are. Everything has been finalized, all final invoices have been submitted, that has been ratified, you know, we don't have any other appeals, so to speak, so that has been settled. We do retain Mr. Piner for new construction. He'll be back in February of '18 to do the county, as we've done for the past ten years, of course, with Mr. Piner on that new construction, that if you will. I do, a portion of it in-house myself, Mr. Piner absorbs those other parcels there for new construction, new dwellings, things like that, and so forth.
What timeframe is he looking back? Is he doing January to December?
As of January 1, what is in place as of January 1 '18? And how much percentage is complete if you start a dwelling? Is it fifty percent? That is the only portion that we can technically bill for as of that January 1 snapshot time. So he's looking for really anything this summer, this fall, you know, really from January 1 of '17 to the end of the year. What is going on in the county, any demos, like solar buildings, new houses, if any, that kind of thing?
All right, you just pumped me a question, a story that I heard from you here. Don builds house, and he doesn't complete. I mean, it looks complete, but he's five percent, not complete. How much can you bill him for?
Only that percentage of the five percent as of January 1 for that next build cycle.
So you can't go over fifty percent?
Oh, yes, I can plug in any percentage based deemed appropriate. We do have a new construction scale, if you will, in our office. Let's say the roofing is complete, the siding, the machine will be be plumbing. We do have a tier-based percentage, that matrix, if you will, that allows us to look at that in reference. Okay, it's really this much percentage, and we, a lot of counties use the same method based on percent complete. You know, we're not just picking a number or dart just to make somebody happy. We're actually using those characteristics of what's in place and what's complete in order to arrive at the value, whether it's fifty or sixty, and we only bill on that amount. That's what people call it, and they say, "Well, you assessed it last year, but they only got a percentage of assessment, you know, so it goes up the next year naturally because it might be a hundred percent, if you will." So, yes ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. The all departments have their reports in there for that. County Council, I haven't seen one in this book at this time, but I did see a, from the Food Bank of the Apple Mall, they're celebrating their thirty-nine years of existence, and they are having a reception on offices of the
Any demos, like solar buildings, new houses, if any, that kind of thing?
All right, you just pumped me a question, a story that I heard from you here. Now, Bill's house, and he doesn't complete. I mean, it looks complete, but he's five percent not complete. How much can you bill him for?
Only that percentage of the five percent as of January one for that next build cycle.
So you can't go over fifty percent?
Oh, yes, I can plug in any percentage based deemed appropriate. We do have a new construction scale, if you will, in our office. Let's say the roofing is complete, the siding, the machine will be defined. We do have a tier-based percentage, a matrix, if you will, that allows us to look at that in reference. Okay, it's really this much percentage. And we, a lot of counties use the same method based on percent complete. You know, we're not just picking a number or a dart just to make somebody happy. We're actually using those characteristics of what's in place and what's complete in order to arrive at the value, whether it's fifty or sixty, and we only bill on that amount. That's why people call up me. So you assessed it last year, but they only got a percentage of assessment, you know, so it goes up the next year naturally because it might be a hundred percent, if you will, so.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. The other departments have their reports in there for that. County Council, I hadn't seen one in this local at this time, but I did see a, from the Food Bank of Alamo, they're celebrating their thirty-nine years of existence, and they are having a reception on August the seventeenth, Melissa sitting for about seven p.m. Also, you see up here in our car sign, we do have notification or a thank you from College of Alamo for our support for the years. You know, they have the relatively new president that came several months ago, and I guess this is final as well. Okay. There any articles of interest or county things that you know about? We have no public hearings, so we're going to the historic courthouse. You said you had a short report.
Yes. And I forwarded all of this, I believe, to you also last Thursday or Friday. And basically, what Craig, the mason, I'm not going to attempt his last name, felt after he came and looked at the building, he felt positive and he felt like that it could be saved, that Craig and Chuck have developed, as this is what John Zeller wrote, Craig and Chuck have developed an approach to leave almost the entire building in place except the lower half of the west wall where the wood buttresses are already in place. And he was wanting to know that we need a general contractor because it would be cheaper if we did not use one. And my response to Clearscapes was that, yes, we would still be using a general contractor, other repairs needed to be conducted, not just rebuilding the wall, about what step the county took, and that Andreas would still be the general contractor as our contract stands with him. Clearscapes still has not provided me with a quote for this new recommended repair. As you may recall back, I believe it was February or March, they had already sent us something about the various options, and you had voted to go with building with the cement blocks. If you want to go ahead and proceed with that, I can let Clearscapes know that's your decision, and then we do not have to get a quote, or we can wait and see if they would send us a quote on this repair. I did speak with Edgar in great length because I know he's also been in conversation with James Andreas, and I spoke with James Andreas as well. James said that he was, would still be hesitant with the repair, even though this mason feels confident. He said because he knows from experience, as does his workers, as if his workers from being over there, what the bricks look like, and he said whatever the county decided, of course, he would support and do the work where the county has needed. Edgar was also of the opinion that the cement walls would be the cheaper in the long run because the thought process is if you say you're going to fix that four-by-four spot and these bricks fall out, then that four-by-four becomes four-by-five, which could then become six-by-eight, which could then become the entire wall. But there are those discussions that I've had with Bill Inspector and with James Andreas.
Well, I also know that during this time, you know, there's supposed to be five looks, and they're not in certain places. I just think it's probably the cheaper way to, with the blocks.
Things you think are going to already agree to do and encourage in the strongest ways to get this work done.
Yeah.
It's been sitting there way too long now with nothing being visible. And it seems like to me our contract of kind of holding us over a barrel or whatever, for whatever reason, keep putting us off for one month to the next. I didn't decide to go ahead and move on and do what we've already agreed to do.
It's almost like at this point that they're holding, they're not losing our job while they're doing other jobs, extreme us along a little bit. I feel a little bit unusual for Clearscapes to be recommending, recommending somebody this far along in the game.
I believe they have all ruled.
He said they have just, his state, John's statement to me was they had just met this gentleman through another recent project.
Yeah.
But where, I mean, why have he not been known?
And recommended him over an engineer. He's not an engineer, but recommended him over an engineer on a project that we've had several people to look at and scrutinize how detailed it needs to be and what dangers work out there. I just, that was, I mean, and then they did put in that vocabulary, you know, that would save some money, and I'm all for that. But I just, matter of fact, I thought I was typing an email about that, my concern over that, and then I thought it was, I said, maybe too many, it's probably a tough one. But anyway, that called.
You know, yeah, I think it's time to move forward. But we had already made the decision.
Well, this is just opinions, but I don't have a vote against, I didn't say anything wrong with letting him use a quote, you know, but it looks like it's not going to be anywhere close to what we're going, we've already got. We can anticipate that coming into our quickly.
That's the thing, it took them three months to get us the quotes that we received back in February.
Madam, say, and correct me if I'm wrong, he had done this in a residential building, wasn't it?
He does work on residential homes.
Homes.
But he's also done more Craig, it's a correct phrase. Now, he did share that he's done some work on other buildings as well.
But prior residential?
I don't remember saying that, but I know he's worked on those.
I mean, if he can get us a quote ASAP, you know, it's just delaying. And, you know, we had Sally coming in, the expert, we had the mason from the each county that worked with Columbia Williamsburg, and a lot of them had very concerns about, especially the end wall.
I think as I mentioned a few minutes ago, I'm afraid if we started in this, we would be, project would keep expanding each time they come out, we'll find another spot, find another spot. I think we've already made our motion that we don't need another motion, we've already said, I'll show with it, and I think we need to go with it. And if this company is not willing to proceed expeditionally, we can find someone to win.
Okay, so why is the pleasure of the board? We had a motion, we've already passed a motion.
Yeah, where's what Commissioner Jordan said, this is all opinion. Now, if you don't feel like you need anything to go back to them with, a motion or anything?
I mean, you've already, you've already made your motion, it was just that you wanted to do, you wanted a quote. I just seem to, because I leave here today, I'm going to sit down, either we need that quote, or we just want that quote from the senior block, and we want it quickly.
Fine. Am I in favor of your, with where we were, and lead to that?
Was that consensus?
That's right.
And consensus would stay with our original motion. Okay, the next item is the Springfield.
In short, EDA has approved the paperwork.
What?
We have signed, sealed, and delivered a certificate and everything else.
I have documents in my office that anyone can't believe it, that we have the whole document. I know Mike McCoutler has already been in contact with Melissa about putting it out to bid and all of that. These are very tentative dates that are subject to change. Advertised for bids about August fifteenth, bid opening September nineteenth, contract award at the October fourth Commissioners Meeting, notice to proceed is November thirteenth, substantial completion August seventh of two thousand eighteen, and final completion September seventh of two thousand eighteen.
This keeps on very funding in place, is what?
Yes.
A so, and everybody has signed off on it. So.
It's great, okay.
So we're good to go.
And listen, to the board, to that, I know that these programs are going to take a long time, and it's hard to get a program to treat, you know, because nobody wants to stick their neck out, you know, and make an exception and then get, get egged in the face later. So I appreciate everyone's patience, and now I appreciate you staying on top of that muscle. I know you did such a good thing.
I'm on a bad ride, we're walking home, so whatever. Okay, is anything else in the old business? Okay, new business, we have some budget amendments. And costs. First of the year, we already got, we did our first budget, and there we go.
Yep. Actually, the first two budget amendments are additive amendments that were presented at the last meeting. However, budget number one, budget amendment number one, I was given the incorrect expense account, therefore had the wrong amount. So this one reflects the correct line item number as well as the correct amount. And it's for the same amendment topic, which is approval in post-in-year for funds budgeted in fiscal year seventeen for the annual shelter upgrade to be completed in fiscal year eighteen.
And this is a track annual shelter?
Yes.
That we are partners with the Flemens in Jolene?
Yes, ma'am.
Have taken out forty-six thousand, only taken twenty-two thousand.
Yes, sir. Yes, it's our favorite, but I apologize for the wrong line item.
And I'm the one who gave the wrong line items out, so I said that.
I believe.
It's a blind moment.
It was a test, how you catch it.
And just this conversation, each county in the annual shelter has relied of the county manager who's at that meeting, and we agree on that.
You're right.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this amendment?
So moved, second.
Our motion's been made, seconded, end of discussion. Hear none, all voters in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the vote is five zero. Okay, amendment number two.
Amendment number two is also an additive budget amendment from the last meeting. This one, the same topic, it is to carry forward funds for the historic courthouse, and this I'll accept responsibility for. I actually took the two thousand eighteen budgeted amount and was bringing that forward and considered the hundred and twenty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Yeah, I have my own thought, I was trying to thought, I have a little mind, but I think I have. Do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion's been made, seconded, to, or carry forward the funds for the historic courthouse from budget year twenty seventeen till this year. Okay, all voters in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, pass as approved. Budget number four.
Yes, ma'am. Budget amendment number four is to appropriate, appropriate fund balance to cover the cost of data conversion from Keystone to BiTech for the tax department.
And if you need more explanation, I can, I can explain. In order for us to get our data from Keystone and to convert it to BiTech, there's a thirty-six thousand dollar charge. And there is money currently, we already had paid a portion of the bill, Kathy has money in her line items, but once this bill is paid, there will not be enough money to cover the necessary items that she had purchased. So that's why we're asking for the fund balance be appropriated back to these two lines where she's had to move money to pay this bill.
This is a charge from Keystone?
Yes.
We're, and I know we talked about Keystone in the past, we're leaving Keystone.
And going to BiTech.
Going to BiTech.
They had the data.
They had to convert, there's a data conversion charge to get from one to the other.
Are they, are they providing us with like a dis?
They're, not as DS gets all way beyond me, but they're already in the process of doing it. And that's why Kathy's going to be able to make part of her change in September.
Basically, it's an interface where we'll drop the data and then we'll collect it into the new system.
I mean, we skipped from two to four.
That number three was approved last month.
The first two were just corrections of that. I thought the same thing with Mr. Jordan. Do I have a motion?
Is a moved, seconded, motion.
Motion's been made, seconded, any further question? Okay, all voters in favor say aye.
Aye.
And they're at five zero. This one.
Budget amendment number five is to carry forward fiscal year end two thousand seventeen emergency management grants to carry them forward for a hundred and eighty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Okay, this is Billy Lynn's program. All voters, remember, we get grants every year, it takes a while to spend the money.
Now, just to the camera, all one hundred and eighty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars of grant dollars.
Yes, sir.
Chair, I move, I make a motion that we approve that.
Second. Post-in-year made and seconded, any further discussion? Hear none, all voters in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, pass as five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Personnel Board Recommendation.
Essential Single Family Rehabilitation.
Okay, excuse me, Essential Family, man, Central, Essential Single Family Rehabilitation Disaster Grant Approval. That's my fault.
This is funding that was made available to all the counties that were designated disaster areas following hurricane, Matthew, and basically, the application process was simple, I filled out the application, and the next morning, I had an email that said we were approved because they want to get the money out as quickly as possible. This paperwork now is to finalize the process with the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. Documents are pretty much the same documents that were approved with the Essential Single Family Loan sixteen that we are already in the process of implementing, with the exception that we can update living homes with this program.
And it's a hundred and fifty dollars.
Correct. And we have actually, based on the applications that have been received for the sixteen program, there have been at least four that were identified that could possibly participate in this program instead of the sixteen program.
Okay.
Okay, certainly.
We need a motion to accept the grant.
Right, you need to accept all of, approve all of these documents, as you did the last time.
I don't think we're going to turn down a hundred and fifty dollars.
You don't want to stay late.
We want help people.
Certainly, we want to accept it. We do need to, County Manager, please, Ms. Holly and Ms. Lash, and.
They, they, they are, at least Patrice is aware of it already.
Okay, and we're probably going to need to use the current housing coordinator to take care of all the salt costs, because someone's going to have to go out and.
It's the same process McDavid is doing to all of this. He's the one who made me aware of the application.
Okay.
It's the same process, it's the exact same documents, so that's why they're going to handle everything.
I notice we got thirty thousand dollar salt costs in this, so basically that's going to take care of the cost.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Jim, I make a motion that we accept and approve the administration of the Essential Single Family Rehabilitation Loan Move as a disaster recovery grant.
Second, okay, motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Hear none, all voters in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, pass as five zero. And certainly, they will make, will notify, put it in the option public so people know to.
Well, like I said, first of all, he's going to go through the four applications he already passed, and then they do not qualify, they're not authorized.
And then they do not qualify them until they're activated.
Okay, the tenth one is the Personnel Board Recommendation.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. Huge problem.
Okay, the next one is this Personnel Board Recommendation. A few years back, we changed the way we handled comp time. We went to flex time. Is that right?
Before I came on board, exempt employees were allowed to approve the comp time before I came on board. That was changed that flex employees and elected officials do not receive comp time, only flex time for exempt employees. Elected officials do not receive comp, flex, or anything. Before, there were four people who, based on their positions before this rule became effective, had earned comp time, and it's been sitting on the books. And the recommendation was made by the Payable Board Leader, Kristi Byer, to go ahead and pay this out at this time, instead of letting them carry that forward because they're not using the comp time.
Can't use comp time.
No, they can use comp time. They, but many of them, two of them that still receive flex time, one never uses the flex time that he approves. And it would be less expensive for the county if it was paid out at this time instead of waiting until their retirement or until they decide to leave the county because then they might be paying at a higher pay rate than they are right now. So the total comp time payout for the four employees would be thirty-two thousand five hundred and twelve dollars and ninety cents. And the Personnel Board recommended that this be paid out from fund balance. And then none of these employees would have comp time on the books.
Madam Chairman, I, what my first thought was, certainly I'm sure the research has gone into this, but from a board standpoint, I certainly would like to be able to read the Personnel section that then authorizes and specifies this in order to be able to vote with the confidence of knowing that what we approved is certainly, and of course, is what we've been asked to do.
This is, this is time that's already been worked, so you're required by the Fair Labor Standards Act to pay this time. We had that discussion there in Personnel Board.
Yeah, where, where is that in our Personnel Board?
It doesn't matter if it's in our Personnel Orders, however it is, but it is a Fair Labor Standards Act and we have to pay it. That was also a discussion at the School of Government Human Resources course that Ms. Byerman attended, and they have said that if there's time on the books and they're owed that money, you have to pay it.
What section, what section of laws is that tied to?
That's just fair, I don't have the number, I'll have to look for it, but they've worked those hours, so they are due the money that is owed to them.
Well, I, I don't doubt that, but what I'm saying is that we, as a board, really need to see that for ourselves, and we certainly be comfortable approving this because, you know, if you approve something like this and somehow there's something glitched in, you know, it feels loud. I mean, not saying, you know, certainly I'm fairly sure this is the way here, but it would certainly, I would feel more comfortable to see that and certainly be in agreement with a hundred percent based on what we're...
And really, looking back, of course hindsight is always twenty-twenty. When we changed systems, it should have depended on when that was done and not kept on board.
And I don't disagree with that.
You know, I mean, but that's like I say, that's hindsight. And so I'm sure that we can get that information.
I'm looking right here. That was a discussion the other day at Lister, and they had the...
And it's, it has come up recently across the state.
Next time, this is September. Well, I think we all understand that it's mandated, it's earned time. I know we're gonna have faith to, to support Mr. Jordan's want to see it. The reason I'd ask that at our next meeting is that we feel obligation to do it prior to then that...
I would recommend getting it off as soon as possible. And if, and if the alters, all the time sheets or DOL came in, all the time sheets, they might question why some of these are actually over the two hundred and forty hours, which FLSA allows, or the four eighty that FLSA allows. And our Personnel Ordinance actually says you cannot even accrue that much, you have to accrue less than that. So they would ask why some of this has not already been paid out.
So these...
Do you have something to say?
Yeah, if I may, also, if, if any of these individuals that we owe the comp time to were to resign under Luther County, oh, we'd have to pay it out, whether we could justify, I mean, it is justifiable, for instance Sandy. I mean, when she...
Or if I may, if we're approved.
Because it has to come from fund balance.
So we've got, basically, we've got, we're really voting to determine where the dollars come from, approve where the dollars come from.
Right.
Yeah.
And the longer you wait, for instance, if you were to table this and say, you know, it's been on the books, we're gonna disagree, and you get into, say, another year, the reason why we're saying let's get this paid out now is it's gonna cost us more as...
Just out of curiosity, these people knew that they had this time? They just weren't requesting it or didn't know?
No, well, some of these people, this, like I said, they, all of these hours, with the exception of the sheriff, because his, he did accrue comp time up through his appointment as sheriff, because of his position. The other three, they have been on the books ever since I came. And we've never requested that they take all of that time, but as you can see from what the time, some of them have, I'm gonna use Mr. Lynn for an example, he routinely includes his flex time every month because of the number of hours that he works.
There's a clause in Personnel Orders that addresses comp time, because I was doing what I said, Personnel Board, we updated it a few years ago.
Right, that's the addendum one.
We addressed that. So, I'm still not, I'm not clear what we're...
You're voting to take the money from fund balance. We can pay them as you want, we could go ahead and take down the salary line item, but then at the end of the year, we would have to come back and ask for money to fill the salary line item to cover the shortfall.
If I may, the going forward with the new, new comp time rules and everything, the most that we're gonna let filled up is gonna be what?
Well, no, that's not new, that's what should have been enforced, and we just had not been enforcing it. And we've had discussions with several employees and several department heads. The county says a hundred and fifty, no more than a hundred and fifty hours for non-law enforcement and three hundred hours for law enforcement.
The maximum, and I thought somebody there about you would lose it.
No, sir, comp time you do not lose. That's flex time.
We hope he's by the end of the, next month. I'd bet so.
I personally couldn't vote on it today. I would, I would, because I really don't see what allows us to do this. I would need to see that myself, like, you know, whatever you wanna do about it, but I couldn't vote on this today unless I saw the documentation and look at Personnel.
I mean, what kind of documentation are you requesting? Because it says if you work the hours, you're getting that money.
The Fair Labor Standards Act.
Right here, it says hours worked under Fair Labor Standards Act. It helps, I mean, here's a fact sheet, hours worked under Fair Labor Standards Act, and it says if you're working, you have to receive funding, you have to be paid. And I can't print from anywhere, so I can't print you a copy right now.
And I believe that came, was that nineteen seventies?
This goes, well...
It's updating three I.
Right.
Who approves comp time? That was...
Each department head does.
The department head, if they say they work comp time, that's just it.
Each department, there's only so many, the non-exempt employees were comp, are comp time. These people are non-exempt now. They earn this comp time prior to the change that was made in the Personnel Ordinance and in two thousand and ten. Some of those people were in non-exempt, so they earned comp time up until two thousand fourteen, thirteen, or fourteen is for one of them. And that's why they have been earning comp time. Now they cannot earn comp time. Two of those people are on flex time, which means if they work overtime for any reason, if they don't use that extra time that they've worked over thirty-seven and a half hours a week, then if they haven't used, I'm gonna use it this month. They earn it in August, if they've not used it by the end of September, they lose it for the department heads, and all of the department heads are exempt. And that's where the flex time comes in.
I apologize for being thick, that was gonna call it, but I, I do not believe. You all want to go ahead and do it then, fine.
Why does it pleasure you, the board?
I would need to see, I need to see the rationale, the written rationale of what, how we're doing this. And then once I see it and agree with it, then I will serve it. You want to do it?
You're not gonna look into the calculation or anything?
No, not, I'm just looking to arrive at justification of why we were taking out thirty thousand dollars without a fund balance.
Well, you do, like when Mrs. Pittman left, we paid her by, we had to pay her by.
And I think that was, we have that, we have clauses in Personnel Orders. But I have a problem with that because I, that was intended, I understood that being a...
Okay, and this should have been taken care of in two thousand and ten.
It was a fair, it was, even though we have our rules in, in Sandy, Personnel, in Sandy's situation, it still was a fair, Fair Labor Act that required us to do it. Madam Chairman, I respect Commissioner's concern and his question, and his final point on his part. However, I will go make a motion, and if it dies, I'm okay with that. And if it passes, then we'll address, I'll make a motion that we, on the recommendation of the Personnel Board, that we make our required payment in the matter of this comp time. That's my motion.
And I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman. With, with the comment, what I'd like to say, certainly I understand what Commissioner Jordan said, and I do have some past experience with Fair Labor Standards Act and realize that they also can find if we, if we don't proceed in the event that we come running challenges. So I do second that motion.
Okay, a motion's been made and properly seconded. Any additional discussion?
I'm called up.
Okay, and I think we'll do about shell hands. Okay, all voters in favor, raise your right hand. All of you opposed. Okay, if both of you support one, passes, but we will continue to, you can look at to...
An email.
And an email action.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, surplus request. We have a, anybody interested in a truck? Two thousand and six, similar model truck. Of course, the AC is not working, transmission needs to replace, and it can't actually work when it rains. The motion is to put it on to sell on God Deal's.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve that for the recommendation of God Deals with that piece of property.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded and any further discussion? And this was an inspections truck, yes. All voters in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of you opposed. Must have felt, and I know you're here, are you, did you want to speak?
I got one short of it.
Okay, if you, we, let me ask, is it permissible for the board, if we ask him to speak?
Sure. Yes, why?
Nobody is in jest.
Two minutes? Five?
We might give you two and a half. Is that patient?
Yeah, on, on the school, I think our biggest concern, back, what we end up with is the roof. And I talked to Randy Baker, who is the head of plantar architecture, and number one, a spec on the TPO roof can go from thirty mil thickness to a sixty mil thickness. The spec on this roof is for sixty meters. Randy assures me that we should have absolutely no problem with that roof for twenty years. We're also, I'm also concerned about the A roof. So when we go out for quotations, we will ask for ultimately to include an A roof on the building. And then we look at it and make a decision, is it worth the difference? But Randy assures me we'll get equal service and it'd be less expensive to replace the TPO roof than it would A roof. So that's where we all agree. One other thing that you need to hear, that Aaron Chasten is starting to pre-qualify bidders, and he called me yesterday and asked if Metal Tech would like to bid on the job and do the pre-qualification. Initially, I told him yes, and then after talking to the school board, turned it, it's legal, but you keep from anybody having any feeling of anything going on. If, if not a hundred percent correct, Metal Tech will not participate to be in process. Please want to make that part of the public record. No questions?
Yes, I'd like to ask a question. Some of these companies, this Jack, some of these companies may call Metal Tech and say, Metal Tech, you're the nearest person here with a crane. How do you feel about if we see a Metal Tech crane out there, just won't give it, give it out, if they ask for your services?
If they call, we're not bidding on it, and I'm not a part of any decision on, on Metal Tech being useful crane, and I'm certain that I don't encourage anybody to call Metal Tech. I think it'd be foolish, so far as just protecting the interest of the candidate, to require a crane to come from Grateful Home, who can come from Muffler Park and do the same job for a lower rate. Because most people probably, you know, we can go up to a sixty ton, most people probably send you a seventy, eighty ton just because that's what they got on the O, and that requires a higher rate. And I think we'd be cutting off our nose, spite our face, maybe to say, no, I'm not gonna let any crane go over there. And if it requests a quotation with just metalwork, such as the lumens and the steelwork for the cannabis and stuff like that, and that's the stuff we would not be bidding on.
Okay, I thought, I thought it was appropriate, Green, you brought up the topic to, to mention here from the camera and everything.
Right.
Be a, be a board if it came up, because I could see it happening.
Yeah.
You know, trying to cut costs.
And someone take photo.
And, and, you know, I can't, I can't do that monetary, I'm not gonna do that monetary call, I'm a tyke. And, and they run the business, and I, I went and signed checks this morning, but that's the first time I've done anything for Metal Tech influence. And ain't no reason I was up there this morning to deep call it so long ago. So, I, I really have nothing to do with management, but I just didn't want that perception to be any.
Appreciate the transparency.
Yes, always the better, the upfront.
Appreciate all y'all's help, concern.
In fact, we look forward to seeing actions, but obviously things being done, but...
Wish we were waiting for you.
Yes, that's right. Yes, that's right. Okay, that is the end of the business.
Ma'am, we can announce that I forgot to do this earlier. There is a young lady from Gates County, and I believe Commissioner Freeman had brought this up last time. She is on the U S D R team for the 2007 S B A G F E I World Ringing Championships. Name's Emma Lane, and she is leaving to go to Switzerland on Sunday, I believe.
And, and the horse left yesterday.
Yesterday.
Yes. But the boat, I talked to Bundy then, he's gonna send us the information as we discussed last Commission meeting, I believe. So, I'll have all that.
I mentioned it, but...
They're flying, they're flying out of New Jersey, I think this morning, last night or this morning.
The horse, when I talked to Bundy yesterday, he was on New Jersey Turnpike.
With horse room.
So, I imagine that Emma's probably a little sad that she's not with the horse.
And actually, there were two young people from North Carolina who's on the team. Oh, great.
But, you have enough recollection of the gentleman who's here, you can say that for the camera, the young man who's here.
Dequan Raymond.
Yeah, Dequan Raymond, and he has been, he's going to the National Cook-Off for the 4H in Kentucky.
Or, or Georgia.
Or Georgia, Kentucky or Georgia, in November, I believe. And he's also going to the N C leadership. Well, he's going to the, with the County Commissioner Association meeting, he's going to go, whatever the parallel program is. I've forgotten the name exactly, but he's going to go there in August. But certainly, a positive role model, and he's doing, he's done exceptionally well with the 4H programs.
Okay, thank you.
I still think he needs to come to cook for us. I'm gonna work on him about that. Okay, any else? And we'd love to hear good things, so I'd have to do with you, with anyone in the house. Okay, comments, citizens' comments, I thought we would, I think we had citizens' comments. Okay, Commissioners' comments. I think I'll start today and move down since we dream started in. I think we have a wonderful show of people, and it is nice to hear what citizens of our county are thinking. Certainly, we take those, your comments seriously. I think all of us took notes. We will be discussing what we've already done and topic, see what we need to do if, you know, in the future. We want everyone, we don't, there's not a person on this board who wants with section cruel to each panel or to individuals. And so, we need to take a look at what we have in place and see if it's adequate or inadequate, and we'll be doing that. Thank you for coming, and I know I've seen the old man I'm there, I know he's excited about going back to school. So, thank you to my students, going back to school, and teachers, and be supportive and encourage them. You know, education opens a key to your future.
Of the people, for the people, and by the people, I think we saw some of that today, so that's good. And, you know, I just hope and pray that there are people out there equally passionate about other areas and events and activities that take place in the county. I would always encourage them to come forward when they see something that, that they don't agree with, whatever they're passionate about. So, glad to see those people today. I think they conducted themselves very well and presented their case and their concern very well, so I thank them for that. And I just want to thank our county employees again for a great job they did.
Well, I too thank everyone for coming and being a part of our local government meetings where we make decisions that's gonna affect the county and all the citizens. It is good to see that those things that you're passionate about, that you do bring the board aboard so that we can address them. That's what we're here for, and continue to keep up the good work.
I do thank everyone for showing up today. We had a lively discussion, and as Commissioner Owens said, everybody was respectful and thought of thing in a professional manner, and that's always life. Just good to see people interested in what goes on in the county and bring their concerns before us, and some things we can help, some things we cannot. Anyway, it's always good to be kept in the know.
And it's obvious by, by the fellow Commissioners here and our Chairman to recognize the discussions that have come forward. I do want to bring to the attention of fellow Commissioners that the folks from Gates outnumber everyone else. I was keeping that in mind, that they didn't say where they were from, I judge I may have addressed, I'm sure.
Glad to hear that.
You watch that.
Absolutely. The, the thing that comes to our mind all the time is that, in listening to the discussions today, I did not record any selfishness, and be it known that this board is not agreeing with selfishness nor displaying. So, thank you for your participation.
Okay, thank you, once again, for everyone coming. At this time, we will enter to closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Section 143, 318, 11 for legal and personnel discussions. Thank you, and we'll take a five minute, I mean, a five minute break. Okay, do I hear a motion to come out of closed session?
Second.
Motion's been properly made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Do I have a motion to, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Okay, Gus?
adjourn.
I adjourn.